We'll stack this.
Yeah.
Come out Halloween.
They're doing fun.
And then pull up. And then if you want to add a little bit every year, go for it. Here you go. She's like a daughter, so.
I'm sure she'll love it, too, like decorating someone else's.
Yeah, and she really will never let me start to pay her, but it'll still be fine. We'll go to dinner or something.
Yeah.
Always take some net to get it on. Jake was at our other thing.
He was.
Yes.
He should be here any second.
Yeah, he is. I saw him in the parking lot, so he's over somewhere.
Okay. I stopped and talked to people on the parking lot, so. They happened to just drive by as like, can you tell us where this is? It's like we haven't had a meeting in a while.
Most of that.
Was ready last.
Last week until we found out about the budget only thing.
So at the water district, we just have two meetings. One with everything.
And then that one.
But our normal meeting is at three. And then our budget is always at six. But we don't generally have a three o'clock regular meeting, so.
It's like a special scheduled meeting.
Yeah, so it might be. Hey, we'd like to welcome everyone and call to order the study meeting for the West Valley City Council. It is August twenty second, twenty twenty-three, four thirty P M., and we're meeting in the multipurpose room of West Valley City Hall. We have all members of the council present. Councilman Norfelt, Councilman Christensen, Councilman Fitzy Imano, Councilman Whitstone, Councilman Harmon, Councilman Hune, myself. Then we're joined with our city manager, Mister Pyle, and our city recorder, Miss Kamic. We'll now turn to our minutes of August fifteenth, twenty twenty-three. I'll turn it to the council for discussion or a motion.
I move to approve those minutes.
Thank you. I have motion a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And those are approved. So for our regular meeting this afternoon is the budget. Did you have any changes or explanation on that one?
The only change I have is that uh our presenter is gonna change.
Okay.
Ms. Carpenter is gonna be here. Our finance director had a bicycle accident last night.
Oh, no.
Broke his sternum and a few ribs, and so he's gonna be out for a little while. I wouldn't normally get into the gory details, but I'm sure everybody would be wondering why he's not there, so yeah. So he's gonna be out for a little bit, uh but. Uh Ms. Carpenter, Jeanette, as I'll probably refer to her as a very well versed, and she'll be fine.
Okay, and you have that on my playlist? Okay, thanks.
I think I actually just left it blank, so as we introduce and then bring up the presenter.
Yep. Okay, yeah, I'll just turn it to you instead of Ms. Carpenter. Okay. Did anybody have any questions on tonight's agenda? Okay, thank you. Uh for the month of September, we have a proclamation. Founders and Constitution Month, so. That we have going here.
This is the one where we had a student attend a um council meeting requesting a reading of the proclamation or declaration, or the constitution.
Okay.
Cause I'll get there. Um so the U City Council has agreed to do that along with this, so it'll be on September fourteenth at six thirty. We have that scheduled. Um I sent out an email, let's see, like a month ago, just asking if anyone wanted to participate in that. I know I heard from Jake, Dawn, and Will. And just wanted to see if anyone else wanted to or was able to, and I could pass that along to them.
So are we gonna read a proclamation as well next week?
Yeah, so the proclamation will be next week, just uh stating our support for that, and then the actual reading will occur on September fourteenth.
Okay.
So. Anyone else wants to participate, just let me know, and I can pass that along to the council. They'll just have specific sections set out for everybody to read. It'll be both in Spanish and English.
Oh, so they're not doing two separate ones?
They'll do two separate readings, one in English, one in Spanish.
At the same time?
Yep, on the fourteenth. Yep.
Okay, that works. Any questions on that one?
Then if there's any council member that wanted to read the actual proclamation next week, we can do that.
Okay, would anyone like to volunteer to read that? Who would like me to assign them? Councilman Whitstone will take care of that for us. Thank you. All right, and then we have a public hearing. Um application S A for twenty twenty-three. And we'll turn the time over to Mister Lehman for the, he's got two of them back to back, but we'll start on the first.
Thank you, Mayor. Council, it's good to be here. This first application is a request from Derek Gasser. For property located on fifty-six hundred west in the shops at Lake Park. Many of you are familiar with this center, if not all, it's the Coles and Burlington Pet Smart. That center was plotted in two thousand and seven. And a number of uh. Developments and amendments have occurred over the years, but we're down to the last large piece of property. So Mister Gasser is excited about plating this. So we do have a couple of slides for you and appreciate Eric going through those. So this is the piece of property. It's just located to the north of the Burlington building that was built about five years ago. Well, you can see the large chunk of land there. Normally, this piece could just be built on as itself, but they would like to include another little parcel or another lot in between Burlington and then and the proposed use to the north. So we just have a couple of slides to show you here. Uh the first one is just looking uh due east on the north side of the Burlington building, the vacant property is just to the left on the screen. The next slide is looking across the property to the south, to the northeast, I should say. Uh and while we're on this slide, there will be cross-access and parking agreements through the entire sentence. They have an operating easement agreement uh where new owners will will share in those functions. And then this is just looking back to the southeast. Uh once again, this will be the the site that will be developed in the future. And then the subdivision plat itself, so um the larger piece um is going to be a new business. We're not sure just what will be located there. The reason for the subdivision is this little piece here, lot four C, is being uh thrown into the mix. So the developer would like to have a smaller uh building uh space between the new larger building and Burlington. So this is a plat amendment uh because we are amending lot four A of the shops at Lake Park. And that is our report.
Hey, any questions for Mister Lehman?
Trying to remember our. Conversation we had a long time ago about. Is it one acre or three quarters for commercial that we?
Oh, for a strip mall type thing? Would this qualify?
Yeah, this. This piece is a point, almost point nine acres, twenty-six acres.
And it's just a standalone, or is it a strip mall type?
It'll be attached to the Burlington and the new building, so it'll all be one large.
So that big wall for graffiti will be gone?
Yes.
That's awesome. Or so.
Or move to the north.
Or move further. But so to Scott's question, is this large enough piece for that break off?
Yeah, that I'm gonna have to defer to Mister Pastor, cause I don't, I'm not involved in the commercial side of things. Um I think because it is attached uh with all of the buildings here, it would certainly qualify for our ordinances.
Is that good?
It's not a standalone, it's it's part of a whole center.
They'll own their own property, or whoever, landlords will lease it to them. Okay. Other? So yeah, my only question was if they're gonna be add-ons and go building to building to building.
Yes, similar to what's there now.
Already there?
Yep.
Perfect. Hey. Seeing no other questions, let's move on to applications S A five twenty twenty-three.
Thank you. This application is a request from Spencer Peterson. Uh this is a very. Simple application, um but state law requires us to do this now. This uh gentleman owns uh the property on the south, the more rectangular lot. And the next illustration is just a zoomed-in version. Excuse me, you can see that Mister Peterson's home here sits right at property line. He has discussed the potential of moving that common boundary north, uh six feet on the east and nine feet on the west. This lot up along sixty-four hundred west is, or I should say, a parcel. This lot here is in the Highgate Hamlet subdivision. Because that is a lot in a recorded subdivision, state law now requires us to do a plat amendment as opposed to a simple lot line adjustment. So we did have a couple of photos for you as well here. Now, the first one is just looking at Mister Peterson's home from sixty-four hundred west. There won't be any new construction, uh no new lots are being created here. Uh the next slide is just looking to the southeast across sixty-four hundred. And then I believe we have one more just looking down the property line, very difficult to see because of the number of trees that are there. And then the last illustration, we have two more. This is the record of survey, so you can see Mister Peterson's home here just at property line. I think there's about six inches that separates his home from the fence. And the next slide shows is actually the plat itself, so you can see the adjustment here in this north line. That will give Mister Peterson some separation from the property line. Both neighbors are in agreement with this, um but because lot fifty-five is a recorded lot, we need to do a plat amendment for this, which is what is being proposed. And this is our report.
Do the council any questions? So was this because the house was out of compliance, or he just wants six feet for?
Yeah, I think he, yeah, so there is an irrigation line that runs between these properties. And I think he wanted some separation to have that ditch a little bit located further from his home, so it'll be rerouted a little bit. The home is very, very old, so this predated West Valley Cities and Corporation. And his, both of his neighbors agree, both all lots are well in excess of the size requirements of the of the respective zones.
Do you know how he ended up with a setback of six inches or so?
No, I would, I, you know, it's difficult to say. Um the home was built uh prior to our being a city. And back in the county days, there's lots of interesting things that show up. The Highgate Hamlet subdivision is rather old, too. It was a nineteen fifty subdivision, so this has been here an awful long time. They may not have had, it might have even predated zoning, which I begin in our our city, I think was nineteen sixty-five. So there may not have been a standard when that dwelling was constructed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, well, now move on for our resolutions, and we'll turn the time over to Chief Jacobs. Chief Jacob Show. Three of them.
Good evening, Pauline Jacobs, Chief of Police. Um I am before you today with a memorandum of understanding. Between us and the Department of Public Safety when it comes to. Uh sharing of information uh for law enforcement purposes, when it comes to automated license plate recognition sharing. Um the agreement. Specifically addresses what we call a hot list, and it provides information for. Crimes that have occurred, missing and endangered persons, um stolen vehicles, and. Other law enforcement related. Investigations um as that information becomes available through um. The software and that's in place that Department of Public Safety has, they're able to contact us and share that information with us, so we can act on it.
So are they only sharing it with you?
No, they have to do this.
Everyone, or only you if they think that the problem is coming to our area?
They they're doing an M O U with all of the um affected jurisdictions, and they contact the jurisdiction involved.
Okay. You have other questions on that? Okay, then our next one is, oh, yes.
Sorry.
Okay, resolution twenty-three, one eleven, or one thirteen?
Yes, and that is the ATF one or the FBI one?
ATF.
Yeah, okay. Now, there's. This, trying to keep the acronyms to a minimum.
Yeah.
Um this is a memorandum of agreement with the um ATF task force. This is renewed every five years. We have a longstanding relationship with them and providing an officer for the um the task force assignment there. And uh. The last agreement. The duration was expiring, so this is a new agreement set for through September thirtieth of twenty twenty-eight.
Hey. Questions from the council? There's so much routine that's not much discussion. Okay, one to twenty-three, one fourteen, which is the FBI.
This is a memorandum memorandum of understanding with the FBI um as far as their violent crimes task force. This is a new M O U in that we haven't had someone on this task force for several years. So um we're doing a new M O U with them since we are providing them with a task force member at this time.
Okay. Now, they sign for the FBI full-time?
They are.
Any other questions on that one? Okay, thank you. All right, now we have one, two, and three for Mister Mattson. We'll start with resolution twenty-three, one fifteen.
We might wanna call the chief back up here in case you guys wanna throw anything at us. How much do police cars cost nowadays? So the first one is the light replacement list. This is our big list that we go through every year and determine the most needed vehicles. So as you can see. The SUVs, we're gonna do sixteen, an F-one-fifty, a Camry. Uh F-one-fifty extended cab long beds, that's what we build our animal control boxes on, so that's kind of a specialty. Um an F-three-fifty and an F-five-fifty for parks. And a couple cargo vans uh for parks as well, and one Explorer for Public Works. That brings us to a total of one million five hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars. These, I know it's a lot of money. These things have gone through the roof, the parts and pieces that we put on these vehicles have skyrocketed. Um we do have one extra car that we put on there. That we need to get approval to buy because we had one crashed and demolished. It's totaled. Dodge has one extra Durango left. So we need to get that one done before they sell it out from underneath us. I know we don't want Dodges, but we're hoping to just do that one last one, and then we're gonna go back to Ford. They're saying the order bank is gonna open up sometime in October. There's no pricing yet, there's no nothing. We need to be able to move, be ready to go, cause they're only gonna have like three-day windows. And they're gonna be really strict and tight with it, so we're gonna have to have purchase orders ready to go. And nowhere we extend. Any questions on the light duty replacement list?
So. You're gonna order all of these in October, or just the Dodge is got the short window?
No, the the Dodge, we need to do right away.
Right, it'll be sooner.
Yeah.
Okay.
They're holding it on our good word. And I told them that you triple taxes on them if they didn't.
Okay.
Um no, the Ford, the Ford is gonna be them short windows. They're saying on the interceptor, the SUVs for the PD, they're gonna open two, three-day windows. So order them in October, they will start building in January, and we might see them in May or June.
Thanks.
That's that's the gist of it.
Any other questions? All right, so I'll go to our next set of trucks.
One is, I.
One sixteen, so Public Works, uh Fleet Trucks.
It's not the bucket.
Not the bucket, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, the fleet trucks are two F-five-fifties, an international crew cab. And a Ford Maverick, and that's gonna be for sanitation. The other two will be paid for out of Class C's road funds. Um. There's snowplows and the international crew cab is is the truck that they haul around the crack seal. Machine, and they take the whole crew out there, so we need a big heavy-duty truck. They put four or five pallets of that crack seal on there, so it's a heavy load. The truck that it's replacing is in pretty good shape, but we're gonna hand that down and make that our new signed vehicle where we go out, close the roads when we're doing slurry.
Okay.
The current one is a two thousand, and she's about had her. Any questions on them ones?
Doesn't look like it. So then the next one is the bucket truck.
Oh, I can't believe it. I looked it up. We brought this to you guys in December of two thousand twenty-one. You approved the purchase of just the bucket and the service body. We've been waiting to get a Ford truck. Ford has told us it's not gonna happen, not, we're not gonna be able to get you one. We don't know when we're gonna get you one. So Dixie Power just recently backed out of a bucket truck. And I threw networking, I'd met this guy, and I said, please, if you ever come across anything, let us know. They found us one. It's really, really close to what we want, and it's within what we planned on budget-wise. So. We really need a a yes on that, cause if not, they're gonna sell it. They have ten people in line for it.
It's amazing how vehicles haven't caught back up.
It's, I feel like it's gotten worse just recently, in the last couple of months, things have really happened. Hey, and this one is a diesel.
There we go. It'll last forever.
It should. It should last as long as the two thousand eight that we're trying to replace.
How many miles did that have on it?
Hundred and forty-nine thousand. But I mean, it's, we're piecing it together monthly.
Are you? Hey. Any questions on the bucket truck?
We approved this back in twenty twenty-two. Um but it's showing that we need a budget opening required, we not budget for it in twenty twenty-two, and have explained that to me.
I'm not sure on that one. You'd have to ask Dan.
It's a matter of canceling P O's, canceling the P O for the for the twenty-twenty pay purchase. And the budget opening is, it's not for the full, it's it's really. Because we need a budget, it it's not exactly, didn't, what we had budgeted didn't exactly cover. The the full cost of the vehicle, so it's it's a matter of budget openings, means we need to move a little bit of money from the streetlight, utility fee. Um uh fund balance into a budgeted category. So it's just that we're close, and. So it's not, the budget opening is not for two hundred thousand dollars.
We know how much. Can you hit us a ballpark? Not not tonight.
I don't know. Yep, we need that to you.
Cause we've we've had the hundred and twenty thousand approved since twenty-two. So I think all we'd be adding is the price of the truck.
Seeing no others, thank you so much.
Okay, thank you.
All right, we'll now turn the time over to Mister Johnson for our Morgan pavement projects.
Good evening. We recently bid a project, um we call polymer treatment project. It's a it's a pavement preservation tool that we have in our football belt. Um we generally treat newer roads with this with this treatment. It's really a sprayed polymer surface. It's like a seal coat. It puts a sunburn or sunscreen um and and a water seal basically on the surface of newer pavements to keep them in good condition. Um this is a product we've been using for a handful of years, and it's it's. It performs well, and and we're proposing to treat about twelve miles of roadway with this. And again, generally, they're either newer pavements from new new builds or recent overlays. And so this is a treatment that we'll put on um lower volume roads, so we don't put this stuff on high-speed roads, but it's great in neighborhoods.
So will this be done this year?
They're gonna start it this year, and if if weather's um favorable, then they'll finish it. This is a product that you need some decent temperatures um to uh to, it has to dry. The sun kind of gotta leave the road closed until it dries, and it gets tricky in the fall as the temperatures start cooling down. So it's possible that that they get it done this year, but it's also very probable that they need to finish in the in the springtime and then the summer.
And their bid will be good through then?
Say that again?
It will be good through then?
Still wanting the price.
Awesome. Any questions from the council? Right?
Thank you.
All right, we'll turn the time over to Mister Wilson for a right-of-way purchase agreement.
Right. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Bring it real quick. All right. So I wanna talk to you a little bit about our sixty-eight hundred west pond overflow project that necessitates this real estate purchase um agreement. Um this is a project we've we've touched on a little bit on project updates and upcoming projects, but. Uh we're making some progress on it, so wanted to give you a little bit more of a detailed look at this, as you'll see some other. Um property acquisitions coming as well as eventually a contract for this project. But out on sixty-eight hundred west, just to get you oriented, we've got the Parks Building here um at the end of sixty-seven fifty west and the little cul-de-sac. And then we have the Magna Water Building um out there northwest of the of the Parks Building. So right now, West Valley City owns uh this little portion here, as well as this little portion here. And essentially what that does, we have a large concrete flume basically that brings a lot of stormwater up into this area, and it eventually discharges into the sixty-eight hundred west pond. Um unfortunately, maintenance for that area is a disaster. There's no way for us to get in there and to to clean this out right now due to certain limitations of being able to access that. Uh so the purpose of this project, one of the main priorities of this project is to get access uh to the bottom of this flume, so we can actually get equipment in there. And drive up this flume basically and clean it out and make sure it's maintained so that we can uh keep that channel open for stormwater. In addition to that, we, oh, sorry about that. In addition to that, um the property line right now, as you can see, the shaded area on the north. That is all owned by Magna Water District right now. There's a fence that kind of divides this little overflow pond in this area right here, and Magna Water owns the north half of that. Um and also over here on the east side, you can see where the Parks Building sits. It's kind of hard to see, but there's this wetland right here in the image. The city owns the property to the north of that wetland also, and access is limited to that property as well due to all the wetlands in our in our pond uh parcel. So what we'd like to do with this project, a couple of things, um right now, like I said, we have this large concrete concrete flume coming down. That eventually goes over and goes through a small fifteen-inch pipe that's underneath this access road. And then eventually into um our pond where it is detained there before it goes into the Ryder Canal. We need to upsize that pipe, of course, underneath the road. Um we have had some flooding issues here in the past where water comes here, and instead of getting under the road, it actually goes west and out around the Magna Water Building. So we'd like to solve that problem. We'd like to solve a access problem so we can get in and maintain the concrete flume. And we would like to get up here to where we can access our property on the north side of the wetland so that we can utilize that property. Um out there on the north side of the Parks Building. So what we're planning to do with this project, the shaded area is the area that we'd like to purchase from Magna Water District. Um in addition to that, there's gonna be some cost-to-cure items to uh pay them, so they can relocate the fence that's on the current property line up to the new property line. They also have an electric gate and a keypad to access their facilities, so part of this payment is for them to be able to relocate that gate. Back so that we can gain access to both the east and the west side of the property. So right now, as far as the project's concerned, we're just trying to acquire the necessary right-of-way that we need so that we can move forward with final design and construction. We do have two more parcels, these parcels down here, where we just need a smaller amount of right-of-way from them, so we can get access. So you'll see those agreements coming before long. We're working on those now. But the purpose of the one that you have before you is to move forward and acquire this property from Magna Water and pay them for those cost-to-cure items for this project.
Hey, thank you. To the council for any questions?
Maybe you need to cast, but I'm just gonna call to present those.
This is the purchase price for. This is the purchase price for the Magna Water, including all the cost to cure items is a hundred and eighty eight thousand dollars. So it's about fifty five thousand dollars for the cost to cure items and then about a hundred and thirty thousand dollars for the actual property.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, we'll go to our new business. I'll turn the time over to Mr. Lehman for consideration of the application SMI for twenty twenty three.
Thank you. This application is a request from Ken Mill, uh, a name that's familiar. To us and that he's the developer of the Newton Farm uh project as well as a couple of other subdivisions in the city. Branching out a little bit here, uh, doing a a uh office park. Um, zone manufacturing this uh located on forty seven hundred south and sixty four hundred west is directly north. Of the Frito Lay building. Uh, the next slide is just zoomed in or excuse me, didn't have a zoomed in version on this. I wanted to show this particular piece. Um, this is on the extreme southeast corner. If I could get Eric to go back one slide. So there's a little piece of property right here, that forty seven hundred south and sixtieth west when we made that little transition. Up to forty seven hundred that is retained by the Utah Department of Transportation. So if we go to the next slide, this is that particular piece of property. Uh, it has no value to Mr. Mill, but he has made a an application to purchase this from UDOT. Um, it has no utility, can't be built on, but he wants to develop it and improve it. As he believes it will add the value and aesthetics to his office park. He's made the application with you dot approximately five months ago. They don't move very quickly, but he uh. It hopes to acquire that land to include in his project. Uh, the next few slides that we have, just kind of uh overview of the property. This is looking west on forty seven hundred. We're all familiar with the water tank owned by the Navy in the. Background there. Looking just uh due north. So there are homes in the Vista subdivision, north of this particular property. Uh, this is the rail spur that comes off of forty seven hundred or across this forty seven hundred. This is an active spur that is used by the Frito Lay. Uh, company uh for their potato delivery. And then this is looking along the backside of the residential, the north side of this project. Uh, which is the the Denver Rio Grande Rail Line. And then the subdivision uh is going to be done in two phases. So this is the extreme corner on forty seven hundred south. And sixty four hundred west. The reason Mr. Mill is proposing to phase this is that the Granger Hunter Improvement District will be acquiring this particular lot. For future water tank, an underground storage tank. So improvements along forty seven hundred and sixty four will be done separate. From his project. So this is uh the first lot, lot one. And then the next illustration is the balance of the property. Overall, there's twenty acres here, um, and there will be five total lots. Uh, these lots here range in size from about two, two and a half acres to over six acres. Uh, as mentioned, there is the Denver Rio Grande Rail Line. There's about a fifty foot easement for the rail line on the north side of this. As part of this project, Mr. Mill will be dedicating about seven feet of right away on the north side of forty seven hundred to give us our full eighty foot. Uh, width on that right away and improvements will be installed curb gutter sidewalk. Um, residents on the north side were happy when they learned about that because. Uh, many of them get out and walk along forty seven hundred when they learned that those improvements were going to be installed. They were. Uh, happy about that. They weren't too sure about the the land use because this is on manufacturing. Spins on uh manufacturing since nineteen eighty eight. Um, but Mr. Mill is intending to develop this as an office flex title park. So um. We don't have any users yet or any applications for those uh uses just at the moment. This is just simply to subdivide the property. It gives him more options to sell uh lots to for future buyers as our report.
Turn it to the council for any questions?
Is he going to be required to put a masonry wall on that north?
Yeah, well, yeah, uh, with this, uh, so there is the fifty foot. Um, border of the Denver Rio Grande, which has a a vinyl fence. Um, Mr. Mill, when he comes in, would be required to to install a fence uh adjacent to the the rail line. Um, he has talked with me about that. Um, there's a pretty substantial grade difference. So there's probably going to be some retaining that will need to be installed. And so he's kind of balancing how to put how to put the retaining wall. In with the the grading of the property. And then the fence on top of that.
But the requirement will be for a block wall?
It is, I believe, masonry. Me, Steve.
Sorry, the railroad, I think it's a separate portion, isn't it?
Yeah, that, yeah, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna venture to say that's incorrect. That was a question that I asked Dominion who did the survey. I believe it's an easement. And so for that reason, the fence, the wall would be required. When we first looked this, and if you go back to the era, we don't need to do this, Eric, but if you go back to the aerial, there is a separated line. So that was a question that we asked Dominion, who is the survey group for this for Mr. Mill. And I questioned them about that and they said that that aerial or the line work that's on that is incorrect, that the property line is actually at the vistas. And this is just an easement on Mr. Mill's property. So it would be fence, but I will, I will follow up. With that to ensure that that's addressed and we'll provide an answer for you.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you so much. Alright, we'll now go to the consent agenda. Mr. Pyle, is there anything? Out of the ordinary?
Two items to mention. One is uh the Administrative Appeals Board member. Um, Mr. Alan Hatch, so he would be our first person to be appointed to that. Second one is item C there, the delay agreement. So normally we wouldn't bring you any delay agreements, but. This is one where the city itself is going to be involved and is going to be. Um, in making those improvements, the delay agreement calls for. And then getting reimbursed by the developer. So that's the only rate, the only reason we're even bringing that to you at all from a delay agreement standpoint. And that's it. The other two are just kind of the normal.
Alright, thank you. Did anybody have any questions on the consent agenda? Alright, we'll now move to the council calendar. Were there any questions on that one? Okay, so next week we have the gala with the chamber. Angel sent out the list of who was going. So if that's not different, I mean, if there's a difference in that, please let her know as soon as possible. That's the only thing I had noted.
Did we land on a date with the? Meet the candidate at night?
That would be a Nicole question.
So I did reach out to the League um of Women Voters and just we talked back and forth about what our options were. After we discussed it, she agreed that maybe it would be better to do before the general election, just based on their schedule and then based on what we could accommodate. So. Yep, we'll work on that for the general election and hopefully have something here at City Hall before the ballots go out so that there's no electioneering issues.
Okay. Alright, seeing no other questions? Potential future agenda items? Did anyone have anything?
Yeah, I have a couple of them, um, there. Um, the first one is um. Thirty eight in the south and Sharrow Street, the south side of Costco. You see the entrance, uh, people, they uh go in uh on the south side, they are stop sign. Um, I remember a long ago, um, at the mayor, she says, uh, we need to strap the lights right there. I think that's right. We got the apartment complex right now coming up here very soon. Also, uh, people that are very, you know, sometimes are very patient and. Do you remember, uh, they uh went into the lady house three times. I took her fun boats and also took her fence in the fun. So I think we need to have a traffic light right there and I support uh what the mayor she brought it up long ago. Because it's so busy. I was there last Saturday and checked it out a little bit. I sat there for fifteen minutes. And then I saw so many cars and people, they're not very patient. You know, they just make a left turn, they go that way and too many cars. From this way and they just took. Uh, uh, it's sad to see something like that sometime. Maybe that reason why that lady she got the porch, it took. Out the her porch and run from her door and also the fence right there has gone. I mean, there's three times for for this year. I mean, uh, last year, I'm sorry. Um, so that one thing, uh, and I think we need to. Study that one and try to put the traffic line. I think as I would support that, appreciate it very much. Uh, apartment come come like there is going to be bring a lot of people into the apartment complex. The second item is I want to bring it up about the Crystal Avenue. So, uh, maybe you're just tired to hear from me. Um, I heard you said you're gonna do uh this year, but now it's August already. It's the middle of August and I haven't seen anything yet. So I just wonder when are you going to do that? Uh, for the sidewalk there. So that the two items I have for today.
Okay, thank you. Do we know if the sidewalk's going in this year?
I don't think that, or if we're talking about the one in front of the school, up and down.
Yeah.
I don't think we did get an approved project for that. We brought to the council the information that. You could direct us to do the project. It was either going to be the five hundred thousand dollar. Um, very sort of minimal, not very adequate project or the five million dollar version ish. That would include all the storm drain improvements. And I think it was my memory was left there. I think Tom maybe remember maybe uh that we still are looking for further federal money that would help us with that. And we're continuing that effort. Uh, there were some issues with the the other grant money that that had been previously allocated. If you remember at the state side, there were some, I can't even remember. We'd have to have Dan speak to it, but. There were some issues with how that money was allocated at the state level or the federal level or between the state and the feds, if I remember right. But I don't think we have a approved project.
Um, then so what the the state and the the Fed? For that project right now.
Sorry, what?
The about the Fed and also the state is said you mentioned about the money is not going to come from the Fed and it's come from the state is.
Partially.
Possibly.
We'd hope, yeah.
The house uh look good or positive or uh waiting?
That's a good question. I could have Dan speak to that. I don't know. I haven't had any update lately. Dan, do you?
Sure. Um, you know, we, so just as a refresher, we applied a handful of years ago for uh Safe Routes to School money. Which is a federal program, um, and we rewarded. When you build that project, it partially funded it, but it definitely got it going. And we got had some issues with the way that they were administering that program. Um, they were basically letting cities treat their advertising these these federally funded projects with local standards, which. The feds got wind of that and they they shut that program down. So the Safe Routes to School Program got completely defunded. Um, from the 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 state level. And so they're working on it and um. We uh we made application, as I recall, for a new program. Kobe can. We might be more prepared to speak, but we were, we've not been successful at getting any new funds um from the state or federal level.
Correct. This spring we applied again.
So do you mind coming to the mic?
Yeah.
Even though I know it does it up here.
Kobe Wilson Engineering Division. Um, so this spring we did apply again through the state for their transportation alternative program. Um, trying to get additional money, well, some monies until we lost our federal money and that application was denied. We were not successful in getting it. So as of right this minute, we do not have any funding available for the Crystal Avenue sidewalk project. So.
Thank you. So I'm going to ask the council, what do you think about it? Are you gonna uh willing to put five hundred thousand dollars to do the sidewalk? Because they walking up winter time and it's really crazy for them. I mean, there's a. What do you think about it? To remind us again, when is that from uh uh APA school up to?
Yes, the north south. Leicester, I was gonna say Leicester, right? Yeah. Basically, that's the line, right? And it would only be up the at the half million dollar level, it would be on the south side of the street. No curb and gutter.
Right, south side of the street.
Right, yeah. Right, so it would be something and that's good.
Right.
But it wouldn't be a real.
Yeah, we could give you a month, more money we can do later, but not right now.
So no sidewalk curb and gutter, but it would hook into the storm drain.
I'm not true, it'd be salvageable. Once we did have the real money and again, and again, of course, Dan and Kobe can speak better to that. But the way we would be doing the the elevations and that's, there's no guarantee that it. Once we went back and we're doing the real project that you'd be able to tie it in.
Yeah.
Which again, I mean, that's all just strictly, uh, I mean, it's it's a, that's a hard policy question for you guys on that one. On the one hand, that's a whole lot of money to be paying, spending on a sidewalk project to do it right. But on the other hand, you want something in there. We certainly from staff standpoint, support the need that it would be good for some. Off-street, off-shoulder pedestrian uh parking or not parking, blocking, sucking sidewalk block. But uh it's not gonna be. It's not going to be a real sidewalk curb and gutter project and therefore you then also risk from a policy standpoint. Does that make the the neighborhood or does that satisfy the neighborhood's needs? Are they even more? You know, unhappy with that? I don't know the answer to that. Uh, Tom and those of you that are in the area might know better.
We'll have weather on it.
Storm drain.
Storm drain.
Cause complication. So and and Dan and Kobe did a great job best they could in terms of we'll do swales. You know, so the water will run off, but will we have flooding and cooling? Yeah, sure. We will.
And we talk about especially for four, five years, you know, we did bring it up and we talk about what what happened for four, five years. So. Wonder we gotta do something about that, you know?
Hey, I still have my sidewalk. I've been fighting for thirty five years, so. Feel feel like you're even only five years in.
His school, so many kids there.
Don't say anything about mine.
Yeah, so there's a lot of projects and not much money, so, okay.
I I would worry if we just had the sidewalk that it would, you know, be tend to be washed out even if. Anything happened, any big storm or anything else. You know, that would be worse for the kids because now we've got uneven sidewalk and everything else.
Yeah, it's not ideal for sure.
It needs to be done correctly because I think it'll cost two or three times more to do it in pieces not correctly.
Yeah.
So. I think we'll be redoing things we didn't need to redo if we just did it right the first time.
Okay. I was Sharrow Street and then thirty eight, so we can have that discussion uh maybe next week or next couple of weeks about it. What do you think?
So. For me, I would like to see a presentation from Public Works with what they think could. Take care of the problem. Um, I see right out. Onlys and just put a divider would separate. There's three or four different ways to get out of Costco. And I take a different path every single time. And Brian takes different ones for me. So there might actually be eight. But honestly, if that's the biggest concern, I think, I think Public Works can give us ideas because there's already a light on. Twenty seventh and then to have another one mid block might be way too close. And but the the experts that tell us that. So if we could get a presentation on that, would anybody be interested in just having a presentation of what possibilities could be? The cost and the cost, yeah.
Yeah, that would be, I appreciate the the. Suggestion in terms of giving a good look at it because I I have no real memory of what we may have talked about before. There may be even something going on in the planning with the current multifamily project there, or even if there's not, then yes, we can look at these other. Options as well. So, yeah, sure.
You can include the traffic study that probably happened with that apartment.
Uh huh.
Going in there, it's gonna get worse, I think.
Yep, yep. It's a good point. We're definitely gonna have more traffic and and that's what we want, right? We don't want less traffic over there also.
Yeah, just needs to be.
Looking at the uh function of the street. Sure.
Okay.
Okay.
Is that good?
Like good. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes. Yes.
Um, I'd like to, an update on our progress to hire a new city manager. And I don't know if that's something that we should regularly be, be looking at. It should always be on the agenda. Just what, what is the process, the timeline? And, and are we meeting our deadlines?
Okay. Can we put that on for communication next week?
Sure.
Okay.
I was recently approached by a resident regarding the possibility of putting a name change, ceremony, ceremonial name change of thirty one hundred South between seventy two hundred West and sixty four hundred West to honor Doug Barney, the officer that was killed in the line of duty in twenty sixteen. Doug lived in West Valley and served being with Unified Police Department. And his wife still lives in that area, and some residents got together and wanted to inquire about the possibility of renaming that section of thirty one hundred South. So I wanted to bring it before the council. There was a
I like the idea, actually.
Thirty one hundred from seventy two to sixty four.
Seventy two to sixty four? Yeah, especially if he's still there, so that's a good.
Okay, I don't know what that entails.
We've done that before. Yeah, absolutely. Will asked me about the possibility of that a few weeks ago, and I kind of recounted for him what we had done over on Rose Parks Drive, for example. What in, what ends up happening is the designation and the name in the county record stays the same, but you then have this commemorative appellation, and it would, and you, you signage for it. Same thing on Constitution Boulevard. It's still twenty seven hundred West, north and south, but it's Constitution Boulevard. So there is a process to do that.
And then we have Brotherson on thirty one.
Caesar Chavez, yeah.
Chavez somewhere. So we've done it.
Yeah.
I had a resident approach me, said he loved the improvements we did on forty one hundred and the plantings and everything else, but who does the weeding around the trees?
We did.
Well, and who brings them up? That's what I was noticing today, the trim up needs to be done.
Yeah, we've done that, and I keep a pretty close eye on that. I go out with Dan and, and Lane and Steve once a month, and I don't always hit all the major thoroughfares, but we watch forty one hundred pretty close, and that stuff grows fast. We've done it a couple of times already this year, but we'll get out and look at it again.
And then have you noticed a few dead ones?
Yeah. I noticed two dead ones today.
I thought three in a row, but.
There's three or four in a row right by the cemetery.
Yeah, yeah.
Talking about the trees, Don.
So that is now our responsibility, though.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Okay, can we just take a note of that?
I have one more. Yeah, I think you don't have it. Okay, also, this is for Wayne. Twenty seven hundred West, I mean, so twenty seven hundreds, that right, twenty seven hundred West, and the wall ready on the west side? Is that we're gonna do, are the cows, are we gonna do the wall at east side of that twenty seven hundred West or? Okay.
That's in the works.
Okay.
And I'm not sure if we're entirely done with all right-of-way acquisitions. I think we are. But you might remember, we've had a number of those come forward to you, and then also the other project is joint, jointly done with Taylorsville County for the light railing, not light rail, the Buts Rabbit Transit Extension going down. So that's part of that project.
All right, thank you.
Just one. Providing me the trees. So I run, I know I don't look like a runner, but I run on forty seventh, we just, just found a bunch of new trees on forty seventh, it's looking really good, but it, trimming them would be great, because they're, they're approaching on the sidewalk, but I'm not worried about that. I, I just wonder if our, our current standard of trees, if it just feels like you could go every other one and get rid of the tree. It's still like we have a lot of trees in those sections, especially when they get full size. They're almost gonna touch, which, you know, feel like Logan Canyon back in the day, when you could just have a canopy of trees. But it's just a lot of expense and just see if anybody's interested in changing our standard to maybe eliminate a couple of trees on those sections.
I don't have an opinion. So I might have called the trimming the incorrect. It's the suckers at the bottom?
Yeah.
Not the canopy above, suckers at the bottom.
Yeah, there's both issues.
Okay.
Sometimes the suckers come out a little bit low, too, but.
Yeah, whatever the the term is. So that's something we can look at on the next planned project is to maybe lessen how many trees we put.
Just if we save some costs and save some water down the road.
Yeah. So we have direct watering for the first like five years, and then are they on their own, or do we have direct watering forever?
No, it's not forever. It's a certain number of years. I can't remember. Five might be a little long, three might be a little short, but it's somewhere in there.
Somewhere in there, okay. Okay, yeah, let's be mindful of that next time we do a remodel of a street.
A tree is a good investment for our city. I don't know that cutting back is the best thing.
Just along the roadway, it might be a little.
But if they're too close, where we, they need to get thinned out eventually, that's not good.
Well, and we've thinned about around the mall. Used to have tons of trees. We took every other one and put over by the Maverick Center on two fifteen. And then in Lake Park, they thin theirs out because they had them too close. So, yeah, so it might just be something to look at on our next project. Look at where the other ones are and see if we need to adjust or not. Maybe they're just fine.
But I love the sidewalk, so all the way to fifty six, thank you.
All right, council reports?
Just as we've attended the National Nights Out, I think they've been well done. Noticed, though, that our Day Buffet is that was one time I went there, there were four four trucks there, two dessert trucks and two other trucks, and the one was out of food. He, he left right after I walked past his sign. So I think we need to
Keep an eye on.
Talk to them and see if they can get a little better representation from their side.
I'm sure Nancy noted that. Check.
And like the couple I spoke to today in parking lot, they had no idea we have food trucks. So we might need to figure out another way to promote it. Because whatever's working, I mean, may not be working as well as what we're doing.
Yeah, because there are a lot that don't understand the food trucks or that we have from here, and when they find out.
Well, and
Very exciting.
Next week, they're having Summer Fest with Clean and Beautiful on that Wednesday night, and so that might get all the yard winners will come and pick up their award packet. So that might get people interested in going there as well, having these little festivals with it, so.
And I, I don't mind just dessert ones, but.
Dessert first? Okay. I think we have more food trucks at the farmer's market than we do it.
Yeah. And there are four or five there every week, so. Stepped up a little bit. Steve Vincent's even concerned that there weren't, wasn't anybody there.
Hey, anyone else?
We were at the what is it?
My own community center. That was awesome. Except I think they got rained out after I left.
Just as you were leaving, rain started. I didn't get out as fast as you did, so I set in my wet clothes the rest of the meeting.
All right, did we have a need for a closed session? Okay, one more action item? All in favor? Hey, we stand adjourned. We'll see.